I'm late. I gotta pull up the agenda. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the USD 290 board meeting. It is just after seven o'clock. And I can't get my board docs pulled up, and I can't quite read that. So can you make it a little bit bigger, please? Thank you. So we have six board members present. And if you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes six oh. We'll move on to consent agenda. Dr. Cops, is there anything you want to mention to us before we vote on this?
Nothing new here, but would like to thank Ashley Gillespie for choosing to be a part of the ORC board. It's a benefit to USD 290 to have her guidance on that board. So we wish her the best of luck, and the ORC board should be a full board after this vote.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes six oh. We do not have any comments from the public this evening. We'll move down to reports and presentations. The first one is instructional framework. Mrs. Bybee.
Do the presentation one. Okay, we have, after looking at our data and knowing that we have a lot of work to do as far as student achievement goes, in reflecting upon what we need to have to be able to help ourselves to make those change, make changes that we're going, will affect our student achievement. What research will show is when your scores, when we have so many kids who aren't meeting the growth that we want to see, or we have so many kids who are below grade level, that it's, it takes it back to that core instruction. That's where that need is. You can look at what curriculum resources we have, but what it boils down to is what kind of instruction is in place. So it's one thing to just tell our teachers, we need to improve our instruction. We have some phenomenal teachers in our district. And we needed to be able to help support them because, to help, to be able to work smarter instead of harder. Our teachers work very hard, and we have no doubt that they're doing the best that they can do with what they're given. So what we needed to do is we needed to provide for them something that would be a tool that they can use to be able to help them to know how to get better. So the work that we, it was administrators went through, even when we went to our PLC conference this summer, it actually, we actually started the research on the instructional framework before we went. But it affirmed for us what the direction that we're going is the direction that research says that if we follow certain steps, we should see changes in our student achievement. So with that being said, what we have developed, and this is definitely a collective effort among administrators and teachers, is we have developed our USD 290 instructional framework. This framework has three focus areas to, for our teachers to focus on planning, teach what they're teaching, what's happening during instruction, and then reflection. Within each of those, plan, teach, and reflect, there are practices, effective practices and key concepts, or key concepts and effective practices, that they can use to, as a tool for them to see, okay, where am I at in this rubric? So it's not reflected on this presentation, but the other document that we added for you all to look at was the actual instructional framework, which is done in a rubric form. So each of these areas, plan, teach, reflect, each of these key concepts, know your students, set and track goals. Each of those has a rubric that goes along with it. Oh, thank you very much. That shows teachers, this is what highly effective teachers, highly effective practices are, what effective practices are, developing practices or ineffective practices. And so teachers would be able to use this to be able to read through these areas and see, okay, where am I at? Do a self-reflection, do a self-reflection practice or exercise to be able to look and see, okay, I might be effective in some areas, I might be developing in some areas, and I may be ineffective in some areas. Of course, where we want our teachers to be is all in that effective and highly effective place. But reality is, everybody has strong points, and everybody has areas that they need to work on. So one teacher may, might be very strong in a certain area, and another teacher within that same grade level, let's say, is maybe falling kind of in that either developing or ineffective place. This is where we want to be able to build our culture, to be within our district, and through our PLCs, where our teachers can be working together to help themselves get better. We want to build that culture with this, this instructional framework, that this is not an evaluative tool. And our administrators are very committed to that, not being, making sure that we communicate that with our teachers, that this is not a thing, a tool for our administrators to evaluate our teachers on. But for our teachers should be, a strong teacher is a teacher who will reflect on their own teaching practices and will work to get better. But some teachers just aren't sure how to get better. And some of our young teachers, they don't know how to get better. So this is going to be a tool that we can use, that we can focus on what effective practices do we already have happening in our classrooms, and how can we get better? So our, the process, if you'd go on to the next one, thank you so much. The process that we went through is that we looked at our data to determine what, what is it showing us? And it showed us that we really needed to be focusing on the instruction that's happening in our classroom versus only looking at interventions with our kids. What we did is we, as an administrative team, we researched various frameworks. The one that we ended up going with basing ours on was Charlotte Danielson. She has a framework, Enhancing Professional Practice, a framework for teaching. There was one area that we didn't follow with hers because it is more of an evaluative tool, and we did not want that to be the case. So that was a professional development area. We truly want our teachers to be able to just focus on the plan, teach, and reflection portion. So we went through and found, and determined how that rubric would look. And then we worked with our administrators. The administrators went through each of the areas, not only, not necessarily looking for wordsmithing, but for really looking at the concepts and are, are we focusing on the things that we think we need, that we know from research that we need to be focusing on for quality instruction? And then we did that same process with two different groups of teachers that included teachers from all three levels, also included teachers, our special ed, we had a special ed representative also, so that we were not just looking at just our classroom teachers. So there were essentially four sessions of revisions. And we're still, as we work through it, I'm sure there will be those little wordsmithing things that we may have to change. But our goal would be for us to utilize this as a tool for our teachers to be able to be self-evaluative, possibly use it as a coaching tool. So one of the teachers in our group had asked, well, how will the administrators use this? And all of our administrators have, if you hear them speak towards it, they're going to be very consistent in this response, is that it may be connected to McCrall. If there's an area that, that through the evaluative process, we see that a teacher is struggling in a certain area, now we have a tool that we can direct them back towards. Not that what our instructional framework would be, the evaluative piece, but we could say, okay, you're struggling maybe in this area. I see some improvements that could possibly be happening in this area. Now let's go over to the instructional framework. What are specifically the things that you might be able to do in order to improve or increase your level of knowledge with your practices? So that's the intention of that. It's not that our administrators are never going to speak towards it. As a matter of fact, we want our administrators speaking towards it. We want our administrators bringing this, our instructional framework, keeping it as a focus of our PLC conversations, of professional development, of personal conversations that you're just having with teachers. So that we can make sure that this is a document that isn't, that just sits on the counter, but that we actually are using it. So we've talked about, just as we've talked about with the strategic plan, is making a one-page document with kind of what you saw with those key practices, so that again, it can stay in front of teachers as they're planning, as they are having PLC conversations. If we need to be directed in a certain area of planning or of reflection, you will find, we'll find that if you read through all of that, it really is going through, as we go through our PLC conversations, the things that are listed in our instructional framework are user-friendly, and that's what we wanted. We didn't want something that was so philosophical. Our Marzano's, which we, the district has had maybe about five years ago, that we started using Marzano's Effective Practices of Teaching, is a little bit more philosophical. Well, that's really hard for teachers to be able to pick that tool up themselves and be able to say, how can I, what does this mean, and how can I put this into play? We wanted something that a teacher wouldn't necessarily need a coach sitting next to them or administrator sitting next to them in order for it to be a usable tool for them. So we feel like, we're very excited about this. So we're anxious to introduce it to the staff, which our goal is to introduce it this August, that our administrators will continue to, like I said, use it and advertise it with our teachers that this is a tool for them. It is not meant to be an evaluation tool. I know that will be hard because it looks like it could be an evaluation tool. When you have things on there that say highly effective and ineffective, then it feels like it could be evaluative. But we should, all in our professional practice of being educators, we should be wanting to make sure that we are moving ourselves to that effective place. So any questions about our instructional framework?
I've got several, and I'll trade around if anyone has other questions. I don't want to hog the whole time. Well, this, it looks like it would involve mentors, especially during that PLC time. Is that an intention?
For new teachers?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, yes. As a matter of fact, Mr. Robinson and I have looked at planning to meet with our new teachers, not even through the mentors, but planning to meet with our new teachers quarterly this year, which is something we have not done. I don't know if it's not ever been done, but it hasn't been done recently. To be able to just kind of check in with our teacher, our new teachers. But two of those times would, the focus will be on the instructional framework. So looking at the certain areas, and we can't, you know, for new teachers, it may be we have to focus on certain areas that we feel would be most important, or that they feel through our conversations with them that we feel like would be best for them to have a focus on. So they're not having to look at the entire document at one time.
And I know a lot of our staff have been trained in cognitive coaching, and that would definitely come into play during that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do you see during professional development days, in-service days, taking some pieces of this and having enhancements?
Right, I think that would be our goal as administrators, as with the coaches, with, even with just our building leadership teams. Our plan will be to continually keep this as a focus on, in anything that we're doing. Like I said, professional development, PLCs, just personal conversations. Keep, keep bringing that instructional framework back to using it, being a usable tool for our teachers. I wish I would have had this as a classroom teacher, because I was the type that, you know, was reflective. But I didn't always know exactly what do I need to do unless you go and research it. What do I need to do to get better? I feel like this is going to be a usable tool. And that was the feedback that we received from the teachers that we worked with, that this would be a use, it would be easy to understand for our teachers. And then our goal, of course, would be to keep track of throughout the year, how we're using it, how we're keeping the focus in front of it. Bring those teachers back together, or another group of teachers, it doesn't have to be those same teachers, and be able to look at, okay, how did we use the document this year? Are there changes? Was it usable? Were there certain areas that we missed? Were there certain areas that we need to tweak a little bit? So that we can continue to try to make this the best document we can for our teachers.
Yeah, I can see a new teacher looking at this with eyes like, oh yeah, in a headlight going, oh my gosh, what is evidence-dependent questioning?
Right, right. And actually, as we went through this, we noted any of, some of the areas that needed professional development on or definitions. So we tried to put some footnotes in the bottom. You will see those footnotes for possible definitions or clarifications. But even with those, we've also noted, what are the, some of the areas within the document that we do need to do some professional development on?
You've touched, Lynda touched a little bit. If this is important, which I'm not saying it isn't, okay? I think applying some professional development time is important because I think sometimes we give teachers a bunch of documents and we say, go do this, but we don't reinforce it with some actual professional development time.
And I think actually, that's the, where I'm talking about, that we would bring focus to it in various ways. Through, you know, official professional development day or hour or whatever, but also during PLCs, during staff meetings, if principals have staff meetings and they're going to talk about data, but then they want to drive it back to their instruction during a PLC time, where it's just a small group of teachers. I think that's embedded professional development, that where we continue to bring focus to it, to offer definition to it, to clarification, monitor, always keep directing attention back to that instructional framework.
Any further, go ahead.
Yeah, part of the reason that we've started having this conversation, and certainly data and all of those things, but we recognize that there are two major areas. And this board, hopefully you've heard me say this probably to the point of nausea now, but we have not done a very good job of presenting expectation to our, to our staff. When a new teacher has come into our district, we have kind of given them a classroom, and we've said, here you go, go be a teacher. And we've not done a very good job of developing the groundwork and expectation for their curriculum or their resources, other than just handing them their resources. And we've not done a very good job of helping them understand what it means to be an effective teacher. The different universities that teachers come out of now, many of them rely solely on the motivation of the student to be great and for them to learn what it means to be a good teacher. And I will just tell you, five months of student teaching does not equip anybody to be a great teacher. There is a great deal of work and a great deal of trial and error that goes into honing your craft as a teacher. And so part of what we wanted to accomplish, both from a curriculum standpoint and from an instructional framework standpoint, is that we help, we help create the expectation of what it means to work in USD 290. Here is the bar. This is what our expectation is. And our expectation is nothing less than at, at least, the very minimum, being effective. And when we talk about PD, we will talk a lot about, effective instruction looks like this. We won't even discuss the approaching or whatever it's called, or the one prior to that. And I can tell you, I don't even know the names of them. Because the only thing that we, what we focus on is effective and highly effective instruction. That is going to be the way that we improve our student achievement across the board. And part of what we have to accomplish, and Mr. Stoltenberg is one that talks about this quite a bit, is embedding this into our PD. This is today, we're going to talk about T3. T3 is whatever it is, but we are going to train our staff on what effective instruction looks like in this area, and then we're going to monitor it. And we're going to, we're going to work through classes, and we're going to help teachers develop it. If we can do these things positively, then we should see dramatic increases in our, in our student achievement. We have some teachers that if they were to do a self-reflection on this, they would be fantastic. We've got one sitting in here right now that would fall in the, probably the highly effective in each of those categories. But not all of our teachers know how to do that yet, and it didn't come without a great deal of work for those that have it now. As much as many of our instructors are born with innate abilities, they have worked very hard to develop their craft. Part of this process is helping provide that roadmap for the development of their craft and honing it to where all of our teachers are highly effective instructors and doing everything they can for our student achievement as we move forward.
And I think we want to also present that picture that if you are reading through this and you find yourself in the ineffective, don't just like throw it away and put blinders on. That, you don't have to necessarily feel bad about it, but you should want to get better. So if you do find yourself in that ineffective area, then just, we need to be able to learn, this is where I talked about earlier in the year, where we need to get, develop our culture, and the principals are, we're working on that, to get to the point where we can talk frankly about data. And if, you know, two teachers have the data that looks so different. One teacher's data looked, their growth was really strong, and another teacher's wasn't, but they really were teaching the same thing, and, you know, had the same pacing. What was different? It was the instructional practices. For us to be able to have those conversations and say, gosh, my kids did not do well. And so what are you doing with your instruction that your kids showed so much growth? We need to be able to get to that point where we're not being defensive about it, but we're being realistic about it. And that, so then through this document too, if we find ourselves, if teachers find themselves in that ineffective or developing phase, I don't want our teachers to feel bad about it. I just want them to have the desire to, and now with this instructional framework, have the know-how, how to get to that effective place, or to be able to have those conversations with their teammates or with their administrators, or with mentors, or with coaches, how to, how to be able to help themselves get better.
We ask our kids to get better.
Right, absolutely.
Any further questions about instructional framework? Okay, you're going to stay there and discuss with us PLCs.
Yes.
There's actually action on instructional framework.
Oh, there is, okay.
I did not realize that.
Madam President, I move that we approve the instructional framework as proposed.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes six oh. And now we can talk about PLC framework.
And just as a side note too, as we're approving, as you are approving these things, I will start documenting that at the bottom of our documents, so that we have a document, when a document has been approved by the board, that we have that at the, as a footnote and the date that it was. That really will help all of our system, as a system, to be able to keep track of the board-approved documents and items. So we will make sure that that happens. Okay, and as another framework that we have, you know, frameworks are, again, those tools that we can use to ensure that we have consistency across the district. Again, we have great teachers, we have administrators that are phenomenal, and, and we, but as a system, we want to make sure that everything that we are doing has expectations and that we're moving in the right direction together. So we don't have one school that's doing one thing and one school that's doing another. So as we're bringing PLCs back into our schedule, the, in the past, there have been different uses of PLCs. We want to make sure that we are using our PLC, our professional learning communities, to be able to move our instructional framework forward, move our, aligning our curriculum. All of the work that we have presented to you all this year, that we are continuing to move on through next year, will be done through our professional learning communities in part. What we found was, when we were, when our administrators went to the conference this summer, it really helped to bring light and some things that we could clarify for our staff to what a professional learning community is. And one of the biggest things that actually, I've been doing professional, being part of professional learning communities for years. And one of the things that I think was so explained to me that what is how we will be, where this PLC framework comes from, was that our PLCs, in my mind, have always been about our students. And it's about, let's talk about our, use the data, how are our students doing? What do we want our students to learn? Using Rick DeFor's four questions. How do we know if our students have learned it? Going, how, what do we do if they already know it? What do we do if they don't understand it? And that brings the student as the focus, which we need. We need our students as the focus. But a professional learning community is about the teacher. And it's about them getting, enhancing the effectiveness of their practices so that we can move our students forward. And I think that is a shift, a mindset shift, that it's not just about the student, but I need to be learning as a teacher. When I'm meeting with my PLC team, I need to get, help, find something each time that I can help myself get better as a teacher, that I can go back then and affect our students through whatever I have learned within our, as professionals. We have amazing experts in our district. So we should be relying on each other, not just divide and conquer, but we don't really have conversations, which that is helpful at times too. But we need to bring this to not be about the coordination, but about the collaboration that's happening about our instructional practices, and then also about our students. So again, having a framework helps to keep everybody on the same page, have that understanding. We can bring back, if we have a PLC that's not possibly being very effective, then our administrators or team leaders would have something that we can go back to and say, hey, let's take a look at this, and if we feel like we're not being very successful with our, the times that we do have, then let's go back and take a look at our essentials and make sure that we're following these. So our framework essentials is that the focus is on learning. It's collaborative culture and collective responsibility. That is very important in that we are all collectively responsible for making sure that our kids are growing. Even if one teacher has, is like, hey, they've got it, they've got it figured out, their kids are growing, we are collectively responsible for every student that is in our grade level or that comes across through our classrooms, to make sure that we are, making sure that they're learning. And that we're results-oriented, so we're focusing on the evidence of our student learning, and that this is all systematic. The four questions that I have on here, those are the four questions that will not be new to our teachers. That is something that we have talked about, but it's a matter, now we're going to take it deeper, and we're actually going to give them templates and documents that they can actually guide those conversations to make sure that we really are understanding what we want our students to learn, and that we are consistent with that across our department or across our grade level. That we actually have a conversation about, how are we going to know that a fourth grader has met this standard? What does that look like? What are we expecting to see? What do we, if they've already know it, it's not about giving them more work. It's about how can we take them deeper into their learning and really help to challenge some of those kids who already, who need that challenge? And then what do we do if they don't understand it? We typically are much stronger with that area than we are, what do we do if they already know it? So we want to make sure we keep that as a focus also. What's interesting though is, you know, our scores don't necessarily reflect. Our math scores were actually a little stronger, and we don't have interventions in place for math. So those are some conversations too, to be able to look at, what do we know if they, what do we do if they don't understand it within our classroom, not just what's happening when they leave for intervention? And then of course, that's, here's the piece, this one is so important. Reflection on the impact of the instruction in the classroom and progress of students. So not only are we talking about how are our students growing, but we need to be talking about what is the impact that has on my instruction within my classroom? So that's, this will be presented also to our teachers through our administrators. And this will hopefully ensure that we don't have people saying, oh, PLCs are a waste of time. I'm not sure why we're giving this time, because we can't have that happen. Our PLCs are important, the collaboration is important. And there are some people that would prefer not to collaborate, and we need to help them see the importance of why we need to be, have them be part of that professional learning community. I'm just scrolling up here, Dean. Right, thanks. So as a, as administrative team, we looked at not only our strategic plan, but the Gemini redesign. What are the, what are the topics that we need to have? There are going to be times when it may be PLC-directed, where the teachers can say, hey, we, here are some things that we need to be talking about within our collaboration time. But there are, a lot of these are the items that we need to make sure that we're covering and that we're using our professional learning, our PLC time on Fridays, to be able to cover these topics. Our curriculum alignment, and that, I've just developed a document also to hopefully have a little more direction for our teachers, specifically on what that's going to look like and how they'll go about doing that. And that's a big job. So that's not going to be a one or two-time process that will take us throughout the year, possibly into next year. But we'll see how we get this year. So that's not going to be a one or two-time um process that will take us throughout the year, possibly into next year, but we'll see how we get this year. Uh looking at our data and our student growth and progress, we'll continue to do that with our with our assessments. Um in fact, effective instructional practices, that takes us back to that instructional framework. All of the pieces that go along with Gemini redesign, so our standards-based grading, there's a lot of work that has, that our elementary teachers will be working on to be able to get to that point where we are really truly understanding, going through all of those four questions actually, uh and being able to know what are, they've already determined their essential standards, because those are on the progress report, but now what are the prerequisite skills we need, and the the document that I'd showed you, um the chart that I'd showed you earlier, the uh common assessments that may go along with that, and then what do we do when we need to go deeper? And then of course, all of the the goals from our strategic plans. So those will be our collaborative topics that we'll have for this year, that will happen during our professional learning community in, communities in addition to um some of our professional development days. Any questions about our PLC framework?
Let's see, one more thing with this as we go back to to developing expectations. One of the one of the processes that um that our staff has really determined that that needs to be a piece of what we're doing, it's actually a part of the Gemini process is individual plans of study and really developing goals and and high expectations for students. These two processes are really right along those lines. The instructional framework and the PLC framework is really about setting high expectations and goals for our staff and making sure that we provide the appropriate framework and the time for all of our students to meet, or all of our teachers to meet those goals and expectations, and to give them direction in how to get there. The the worst thing in the world that we have done in the past is to just give, and maybe not even give our teachers at some point, but just give them a task and say, here, you just go do it. And we wind up with with discontinuity um throughout our different grade levels, sometimes even even within the same building, certainly between buildings, and certainly from a vertical alignment of K through twelve. Those things, if we want to create the environment that we have discussed here, to where all of our students are going to graduate from Ottawa High School with the knowledge, skills, and behaviors to hold life-sustaining employment, we can't continue down that process. We have to be aligned, and we have to be conjoined, and we have to be working together in a collaborative environment. Then when we have a teacher who is not highly effective in an area, then maybe their neighbor is, and we can work together to ensure that both of them become highly effective in that area, and that we're doing the best that we can for our teachers. The instructional framework and the PLC framework work right. They coincide with that belief system that high expectations and setting appropriate goals and helping our our staff achieve those goals is going to be a key to our success as we move forward. I would also want to say that there are a lot of people that had a great deal of influence and a and a ton of work has gone into these two things. The PLC framework was something that did not come easily, and a lot of different ideas going into it between our administrative staff about what's appropriate and what's not appropriate, what we've learned from years of PLCs, um or at least collaborative time within our buildings that has sometimes been effective and sometimes been ineffective, how we work with our staff to best ensure our successes in those areas. And certainly from the instructional framework, not only all of our, all of our um admin staff, but all of the teachers that came together that work and influenced that document. These have, these have been two documents that a great deal of blood, sweat, and tears have gone into, and a lot of work from our staff have have tried to develop the best frameworks that we can as we move forward, and much like all of our documents, we'll continue to reevaluate, review, and resubmit to our board for approval as they need updates.
And throughout this whole process, we're thinking of every, we're not just thinking of the classroom teacher, but we're thinking thinking of how this affects every educator that we have within our system.
Mrs. Bybee, I have a question, kind of relates the PLCs um to the um instructional framework. I understand that we have this expectation with the framework and then kind of giving the tools to accomplish that through the PLCs. Um and with this, with this program that you all have chosen to follow, how long until we should see a reflection in data? I mean, how, I mean, I know these things take time, right? It takes time to develop things and for change to happen, but when we're looking at the success of this, I mean, what what should we see? What should we expect to see?
Well, gosh, I wish I could put a date on it. I wish I could say by the end of this year, or by, for sure, the end of next year, we should see significant increases. What I can tell you is that we we have seen through strong instruction in certain classes, significant growth within, with the data. And our hope would be is that we are able to um, you know, increase the amount of teachers that are seeing that same kind of of growth from their kids. Uh I think, anytime you you I I I mean, I would, I would like to say if I was going to put a, I would, by the, by not this next year, but the following year, we should see some some significant changes. My hope would be, here here is what I feel strongly. Um we have building leadership teams, we have um all of the people that I have been involved with as far as even like through our curriculum adoption, the math cadre, which includes our math depart- the entire math department from the middle school and the high school, and then um representative, representatives from each grade level, from each school. Large group of teachers. But then all the other leadership opportunities that we've had. Our teachers are, they are for the most part willing and wanting to do what they need to to be able to help our kids achieve. And when when we have shown the the data um in certain heights, it's like, whoo, gosh, you know, kind of takes their their breath away. Um yet they are willing to be able to put the effort. That's what we, and we have administrators who are consistent with how the message that they are, that they will convey. That every, we are definitely um as an administrative team, including all of the district administrators, building administrators, we are definitely on the same page as far as what our expectations will be for both of these frameworks. And for the work that we know needs to be done in our district. That is a huge step. And as we bring our building leadership teams on board with these also, they will be the leaders that will be driving some of this change. So I feel very positive about it.
Well, I know we have extremely strong staff, extremely strong teachers. Um I just want to make sure that, you know, our expectations of this, that we know kind of what to expect, how we want to know it's working, and when we could, should expect to say that.
Yeah, and.
I think from a teacher's point of view, there have been times when I have felt that the board expected things to happen way too fast.
Right.
And things like this takes time, and we should be patient, just like with the Fontis and Purnell reading series, that's going to take time to see the improvement in that area, so.
But then we also understand on the flip side is we can't continue to say, wow, we're we're trying.
Right, true.
There there, and that's where we have to strike that balance. We need to have a spec- a a certain level of concern, but we also need to have that understanding that when we change, have changes in processes, it will take some time. But we also don't want to lose that level of concern that, you know, we do have a lot of ground to make up, so.
Thank you so much.
I've got a couple of comments. One is, I I do get in invigorated when you come up and talk about, because I'm one who love the data, of course. Uh I do believe that whether it's math scores or state scores, I've always said, just give me whatever mile marker you want to go by, I don't care what you go by, and just show me the roads, and then let's get there, right? So thank you for taking this. I think there's a couple of things I want to point out. Last few months, we've had a lot of talk about our teachers, okay? And I want to embolden the board and and the district to think that it isn't just our teachers. It's every human being touching the the student learning process. And that's right down to the critical two, the buildings are clean, the lunchrooms are good. I mean, you know, let's talk about it's a holistic approach. So second of all, I think it's great that we're talking about teachers and PLC, and and we're going to get this data, and we're going to hold them accountable, and and right on. But I also think we ought to get feedback from the teachers and say, are we, are we equipping you? Okay, are we giving you the tools? Are we giving it to you in a timely fashion? Fontis and Purnell, you've talked about, you know, when are they, when are we rolling them out, when are we going to hand them, hand it out? How are we handing them out? You know, there's things like that. Are there other things inhibiting us from learning? Okay, so it isn't just, here's two tools and we ought to go back and forth, and it isn't just in the teacher world, I like to embolden that, every para, every administrator, you know what I mean? Special education has a role in it. Everybody has a role in it, right? So it isn't just that we win or lose as a classroom teacher, or the fifth grader, uh Lincoln did. I think we win and lose as a district, okay? And it's, we're all pulling together and and all that, so. I think it's important that we're focusing on teachers, but I really think it's important that we're focusing on the entire body.
And that's one of the things too, that we've, we will continue to um to articulate, is that it isn't just the classroom teacher. So our special education teachers will be part of this process, our title teachers will be part of this process. Um uh as part of our PLC as an admin team, we have talked about having our pairs on one of our, one time a month on our Fridays, where they are able to be here so that they can work with their special, with the special education teachers to be able to make sure that our practices that we're offering, that support to our kids, is what is intended. Uh so I think there's a, there are a lot of things in place that we want to make sure um that that we do in involve it, look at it as a whole village, that we are all working together. Um it isn't just the teachers, it isn't just the administrators. Um and and but that we're not also giving excuses. You know, we we need to involve our parents, but there's only so much control we have over what happens at home, so we need to not focus on that. We need to focus on what can we do with our kids when they're in our, in our care, and and that involves everyone, not just the classroom teacher.
Any further comments about PLCs? We will move on to new new course curriculum, Mrs. Bybee's.
Do we need to vote on this one too?
No, this is just a script.
All right.
Uh but we will be voting on new course curriculum after her presentation.
So this is our, uh, we have a new course that um we do not have the description yet, because that, we wanted to be able to have um our teacher be part of developing that course description. Um we have an introduction to Spanish class that will be uh introduced at the eighth grade level. So in order to develop this curriculum map, this ba- this really comes from our state standards, what our state expects for our kids who are starting Introduction to Spanish in eighth grade. So you will see that um there are certain, there are different, five different goal areas that our teacher will be uh that the teacher will be covering. Um it is recommended by the state that we, they have all various descriptors and indicators for students who are um working with a world language. And it is recommended that when started in middle school, that students follow the standards that are what they call novice low learners for the first a hundred hour, hundred hours, um or essentially first semester. Second semester would be moving to the mid, novice mid learners. So again, this is a guideline for uh working with our eighth graders. Um but this will definitely be, and the evidence of learning performance tasks, those are o- options that the teacher can choose that will be able to meet those standards, um and those perform, those indicators or performance descriptors. So it may not be that the teacher's doing all of those things, it will be based on the students' needs and their progress that they make. But we wanted to start with um getting back to using our standards as the basis for what we're determining is our curriculum. Not just, this is what I've done in the past, or uh when I've looked at, I actually looked at uh one from one, a neighboring district that was just very basic, uh and it was just more just a list of skills. We want to make sure, and this is a prime example, that our teachers are using our standards, that we're basing our curriculum on our standards, and that we can determine what is it that we need our kids to learn. So that's how this was determined. There's nothing filled in in the resources yet at this point, because again, our teacher needs, it's summer. We didn't need to bring the teacher in, we want our teacher, the teacher to be part of this process also, so. So what we're, what you would be voting on here would be looking at, this is uh the curriculum that would be intended by the state for us to provide for our kids who are Introduction to Spanish, starting in eighth grade, starting in middle school.
So is the expectation that the teacher teaching this follows these standards specifically?
Right.
And not interject any of their own philosophies of how it should be taught, or what should be taught?
Uh no, not necessarily how it should, how it should be taught, we give that autonomy to the teachers on how they, how they.
Right, I meant more of the the what.
The what, yes. Now, um this is pretty hefty for for, in comparison to what you typically see for eighth grade um Introduction to Spanish. But I feel like we need to start with our bar set high versus set at super low. Uh so this will, to me, will be a um a work in progress that we'll have to collaborate with the classroom teacher. Um but will the teacher be expected to follow the majority of this? Yes.
Thank you.
Will there be any effort to push it down into the elementaries at some point?
I think at this time, we're looking to see what the um what the response is for middle school before we would look at elementary.
Susan, we tried to hire a Spanish teacher a couple of years ago and really struggled to find some appropriate licensing.
How, using this curriculum for eighth grade, how will that lead into the curriculum for the high school? I mean, how will these students, how?
So, so how it works is that if uh if they start in middle school, then like I said, they start at the novice low learner descriptors or standards, move to novice mid learners, then they just continue, continue to move through that process. It, there are standards that go all the way up to if they were to have complete and four full years or even five years of of Spanish within our state standards.
So that matches up then with what the, with the freshman and sophomore and or first, second, and third level expectations are at the high school?
Right, because if if these kiddos um start in eighth grade, then they wouldn't be retaking Introduction to Spanish. It would move into that next level.
And you will see some changes that were outlined um through that PLC framework, when we talked about curriculum that will be, that will be taking place, that currently, the Spanish curriculum is in BYOC and is um is very much um driven by our resource and what we were doing within the classroom based upon the resource. Where we will change that approach in the future is that, is that you will see the curriculums look more like this based upon our standards and the essential learnings. And the expectation will be that there will be a vertical alignment between what we do in eighth grade, what we do in ninth grade. But ninth grade can't be a situation in which if they didn't take it in eighth grade, they can't be successful in ninth grade. So there'll have to be some overlap between middle school and high school. Um but you will see some changes in curricular format that will probably come to you towards the end of next year, that would have Spanish nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, depending on how quickly we can get through it, look more like this. And based more on our standards and the essential learnings that we need for our kids moving forward.
For instance, that novice mid learners, uh a ninth grader could very well be starting with some of those same, those same pieces.
Okay, so you've answered my question. We are aligning between eighth grade and high school.
Yes.
Okay, but now I take as an eighth grader, do I take Spanish one as a freshman uh and start what you traditionally have been teaching one, two, three, four? Or do I, if I take eighth grade Spanish, I start as, as a freshman, Spanish two?
You know, that'll be something that we will look at with the teacher too, is is based on those kids, if they, depending upon how many kids take Spanish eight, are they going to be mixed in with those kids taking Spanish one? Maybe their um ability level, they they are able to go ahead and do a Spanish one just fine, and they're still going to continue to learn, because that Spanish one may be starting with novice to mid learners, what they kind of ended with, but then they continue to move forward.
So I mean, there's a, there's a lot left to work through in this and and determine how it works, but there's some real differences between what's happening at the eighth grade level and what would be taking place at the ninth, ninth grade level. Maybe the most important is the the notion of immersion. So the eighth grade level will not be an immersive impact upon our kids. It will be it it will be English-based instruction of Spanish for the most part. When we get to high school, it becomes an immersive environment. And and maybe for all of those kids coming out of eighth grade, it's in their best interest from a learning standpoint to be in that environment again and gain more access to to the language. I don't know that we're going to to believe that that we're going to see students so strong in Spanish at the eighth grade level that we're going to talk about them skipping Spanish one and moving into Spanish two, and whether or not that would even be healthy for them academically. Um Spanish two, three, and four, as many of us know, get, become very difficult and taxing on our kids. Um and we need to make sure that they have a strong foundational core before we start moving them into.
And really, it goes back to making, again, we can start with our curriculum like this, but we need to make sure we know our students, and we understand our students, and we understand the level that they're at. So it may be that Spanish one has, like I said, starts with some of these things, exact same things that happened in Introduction to. So, it may be that Spanish one has, like I said, starts with some of these things, exact same things that happened in Introduction to Spanish, but now it is through, through that immersion piece. And I will also tell you, my kiddos, my own children, they took Spanish from kindergarten through high school and they are not Spanish speakers. So, so there's a lot of times when you, it is, it really is based on the kids. Now, they have some friends that, hey, it was, it worked and they, it was amazing for them. So, every, every kiddo's different on what they're able to pick up. And that's where we need it to be, not only about here's our curriculum, but we need it to be, where are our students and are we placing them correctly in the curriculum that, for Spanish?
No, I appreciate what you said because I, I like what you said. You're going to give the flexibility. Just because I took eighth grade doesn't mean I'm going to be forced into.
Right.
Spanish two, but I could go, like you said, take Spanish one.
Right.
I'm just a little bit ahead. I've got a little bit of introduction to it, you know what I mean? So, I like how you're saying that of saying, you know, hey, just because you took eighth grade Spanish, we're not going to pigeonhole you one way or the other.
And being in an immersion, more in an immersion environment is much different than learning Spanish through, in an English-based classroom.
Thank you.
Dr. Cobb, are we voting on these separately or together?
Why don't we just vote on them together if that'd be okay?
There's no more questions. We can move on to the next.
Okay, and so then for the ACT prep course, this is one that is, will be starting this next year at the high school. The high school felt it was important for our students to be able to have a, a foundation built for them on what it is to take an ACT class. So, with this course, the students would learn basically how to prepare for this class and how to be able to find those strategies, specific strategies that will help them be more successful, to be able to understand what to expect with an ACT test and for them to have a lot of practice with some actual ACT practices of taking that test. You know, a lot of places that have these ACT prep courses, what our student, what the students really learn from it is not to be so scared. It's a hard test. And so, for a kiddo not to have the opportunity to be able to just, you know, understand what, what they're walking into, that kind of sets them back even just a little bit on, on if they have anxiety or if they just are like, wow, this is really a hard test. So, so our hope will be by offering an ACT prep course that students will have a better foundation before they move into the ACT. And there, there's a book, there will be a book that goes along with, with this course. And there are lots of ACT prep courses out there that are very successful for students, so.
So, is the idea with this course to use multiple content area expertise to teach their specific areas?
No, it will be a teacher who is, Mrs. Flax, I believe, will, at this time, is teaching first semester. And then there will be another teacher that will do some training with Mrs. Flax to be able to understand. The ACT is a whole different ballgame. I mean, you really need to understand what the ACT is about to be able to, to be able to help kids understand strategies that they can use to help them be successful or more successful than they might have been. So, it's, it's, it's not as much about the content as it is about the strategies that they can learn from this course on how to be able to help them with that, with the test-taking strategies.
The other, the other part in this curriculum is recognizing who we're targeting with this particular instruction. So, we will assess every junior student with the ACT and it provides us a great deal of, of feedback on how well our curriculum is working. What we believe is that every student across the board should be able to score proficiently on the ACT based upon the curriculum that we offer and even at the most basic level. What we, what we want to make sure is that we have an opportunity for students who choose to accelerate their learning and know that they are going to be reliant upon their, their success on the ACT to either pay for college or gain acceptance into college at whichever level they choose, that they have some avenues to, to have help improving that score and looking beyond it. So, this will be a predominantly college-bound course for students who are, who are intrinsically motivated to perform at higher levels on the ACT. It'll be interesting to see how it works out and how, it, some data points that we will draw for this is how do these kids compare to similar kids in the past that didn't have the preparation? Are we going to see significant increases in their scores? It will be an interesting process.
So, how will we track that? Will we do it by if they've taken the test prior and then see what they score after taking this?
Yeah, so, so we can have multiple data sets. One is, we, we can look at, we can look at commonalities between the students who choose to take this course and students in the past, our highest achieving students and those that didn't have access to an ACT preparatory courses. What were their ending scores like? Were they, were they taking it three or four times a piece? And, and what did their scores increase and the, and the statistics to go along with that? When we start looking at this new branch of data, we will, we will start looking at where they were at their junior year when they took it. Did they take it again at the beginning of their, of their senior year? When their course went into effect, did they take it again at the end of that course? And what was that level of jump and if, is there a level of jump? And, and really, we will start looking at how, how impactful this curriculum is and start making changes based upon that data. Do we need to, do we need to focus on different areas? Do we need to do something more aligned with, with individual needs of kids? What, what does it mean for us? But this is a great, a great step in the right direction in helping our kids be successful.
And I think honestly, getting feedback from the kids about their own comfort level about, after taking the course, how did they feel moving into the ACT, taking it a second time around? Did they feel more confident or, you know, just getting their feedback?
Any further discussion before we see if there's a motion to accept these courses?
Madam President, I move that we accept these courses because I'm excited that we're offering an ACT score. Oh, and the Spanish is okay too, but I really think this will help our ACT prep. And I think that's great that we're offering it.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes six oh.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it. And we are on to the next section. Dr. Cobb's has some handbook readings for us.
For any board reports?
Oh, yes, we are. I don't know why I passed right over that. Are there any presentations from board members? Nope.
Nope, could have passed over it.
Alright, I guess I could have skipped right over.
You already knew, didn't you?
I must.
Alright, this is that time of year for the second reading of handbooks. You've seen them all already. The only one that we added there was the OVLP handbook. The only thing that we changed in the OVLP handbook was the date. So, you've seen the handbooks over the course of the last, what, four weeks now? If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but the handbooks are pretty self-explanatory at this point.
Any discussion?
I make a motion, we approve the handbooks.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes six oh. We'll move down to the second reading of policies.
Policies are the same. We have several policies. The Cyclone Connect policy is really an update, bringing the two middle school and the high school policies together, creating one document. The, the one on the PDF, or actually the policy updates June of 2019, this is one that came out of looking at our handbooks and ensuring that they were aligned to our current policies. So, the handbook policy statements here are just ones that we need to make sure that we change. They've already been approved in some manner or fashion. They just didn't show up in the same place everywhere. So, there shouldn't be a whole lot there. And then, of course, the KASB policies. The only thing that I would mention there is the one opportunity to have discussion on any of them, but we've discussed the discrimination policy and put it out there. I do think it's important for us to, to be a leader in that area. And then, of course, the policy that's within this that, that we put in the, in the motion not to accept would be the one on nepotism that would, that would certainly put our district at risk based upon that policy. So, if there are any questions here, we'd be happy to answer those, but again, we've seen these policies for about four weeks now. I'm sure you're tired of them.
Any discussion on these? Is there a motion to approve the policies?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And they pass six oh. We'll go down to renewal of Cisco services.
It's me.
It's you.
I'm going to get down to just the total here. We can talk quickly about what all this is.
For as long as I've been here and many, 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 many years before, we have engaged with a vendor that has provided our Cisco warranty for us. They act on behalf of Cisco and they do an okay job. We have received several references from Sirius, which is a nationwide company as opposed to our regional company. They have, have a higher level of service with Google or with Cisco because they have all these partnerships in place. They can offer us a greater level of service and at a cheaper cost. Not to mention our relationship with our previous vendor is faltering. So, we found someone else. The way Cisco does this though, so Cisco employs these vendors to work with us because Cisco is so large. We are only allowed to have what's called a deal registration with one company at a time. That deal registration gives a preferred pricing for that vendor and that vendor only. So, we have broken our deal registration with our previous vendor. We made a new deal registration with Sirius and we got a price that was lower than our previous price. And what this is, there is no content we're receiving for this. This is simply warranty service. If we have a core switch in the data center at the middle school that goes out, within 24 hours, they'll send us a brand new one. If we have a distribution switch in one of the classrooms that goes out, within, I think it's three business days, we'll have a new one. We have spares here on site of those because they're much cheaper than our core switch, which is tens of thousands of dollars. So, this is, this is cheap warranty service for us from phones to distribution network to licensing issues. And we get a one-stop phone call, get our problem fixed and it's, it's, helps me sleep at night. Any questions or concerns with Sirius?
Are there deductible or anything we have to pay when we have a claim?
Nope, that is it. That covers everything. And I will tell you, historically, we don't have issues. I just jinxed it. That was not smart. It's not smart at all.
You just did it.
First week of school.
And I will also tell you, it used to be more expensive than this because we covered all of our switches. And we made the decision, what, two years ago now, to take all of our distribution level switches, those cheaper ones, and just not pay for that warranty service. And instead, every year, buy a switch or another switch and just have it up on a closet, up in the closet over here for spares. And if we have a problem, we go swap it out and we're still ahead, so.
There have been multiple times when we've, when we've utilized this even prior to Dean, back to Andy and even prior to Andy, but we've had server crashes. We've had, we've had network malfunctions. We've had things that we've been able to call even the, the prior entity to Sirius. But to be able to call and say, this has happened, we need to fix. And fairly quickly, we can, we can get up and running. Maybe more, is more important today, maybe more so than ever because of our reliance upon digital instructional tactics. Alright, so, there's, there's nothing worse for a teacher who has planned and done all of the work to create a great lesson to all of a sudden have something go wrong with our network and they have to swing from the hip to try to figure out how to, how to get through their class. So, we need to make sure that our, that our network and everything that is associated with it is functional daily and when it breaks, and it does break from time to time, that we have the, the right repair services in place that it can be fixed and backed up before it becomes an issue for our staff.
This price also encompasses all of their support services for these specific technologies. So, if we have a phone issue, which we had a couple of years back where our phones just were dead, we call them, what we call our previous entity because they were our contract, but we call them and say, hey, we need help with this because things like voice over network or just voice over IP are so complex that it requires a dedicated engineer. That's their job day in and day out. They come in and 15 minutes, they have it fixed up and going, or they find the problem and call AT&amp;T for us, which is also, I'd pay that price twice over to never have to talk to AT&amp;T again.
Oh, yes, no kidding.
Any further questions for Mr. Gral before we accept a motion on this?
Madam President, I move to accept this bid in the amount so stated, or in other words, $23,854.03, if I read that right.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes six oh. Thank you. We do not need a executive session for negotiations. Is there anything you need to share with us about that?
Nope.
We do not need an executive session for personnel, but you all have been presented with the personnel report. Is there a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes six oh. We are down to announcements.
Alright, you can pretty much kiss summer goodbye, alright, because the, the things are, I know Dana's, Dana's going to be upset with me over there. But a, a couple of things. Remember that on Thursday at the KACTE conference, they'll be recognizing Stellataarp as the Lifetime Achievement Award recipient for the state of Kansas. So, we'll be going that way. I've not heard from anybody. If there's somebody that wants to go with us, we're leaving fairly early, probably around eight o'clock on, on Thursday morning and get to Manhattan and then get back. But if you are interested in going, please let me know because we need to make reservations for you. On August 1st, new teachers report. We've got some plans to do some breakfast and whatnot here for new teachers. We'll have teachers on August 1st, August 2nd, and then again on August 7th, which remembers the New Educators and Health Professionals Luncheon. It will be at OHS at 11:45 sponsored by Chamber of Commerce here in, here in town. Once we get through that, we get pretty hot and heavy into, into the big stuff. August 8th, we have redesigned training. I think Mr. Robinson, Mr. Stoltenberg and myself will be going to Wichita for redesigned training. All of our other administrators will be here for FastBridge training on that day. On August 9th, Tazin comes back down to start taking a look at our curricular needs and how we might begin to deal with intervention and really diving deep into our data and our assessment scores. On August 12th, we bring all teachers back. We have not, we may wind up having our, our back-to-school breakfast there at the middle school because it's newly renovated there in the Commons area. But it's probably also the, the place that is most accessible for the entire staff. I think the cyclone room gets a little, gets a little small there. So, we'll most likely do that at, at OMS and have the normal stuff there. And then we jump straight into PD after we get through some of those things. PD's starting around 8:30. Breakfast's starting around 7:45. We'll have a welcome back and all of those things.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes six oh. Thank you.